We got full house here, look at here.
We got 500,000.
Alrighty, Joe has given me the sign, I believe it is 6 o'clock, so I'm gonna call us to order in accordance with South Carolina Code of Laws 1985, Section 30-4-80-E. The following have been notified of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting, the Herald, the Charlotte Observer, CN2, NWRHI. If I could, please ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, be seated. Alright, you have all received a copy of the agenda, were there any adjustments or corrections?
No ma'am.
And that will stand with unanimous consent. I do want to acknowledge Mr. Bolden is not able to be with us tonight, he's got some family situations going on that he is tending to, so the rest of us will stand in his place tonight. We are gonna start off with some really exciting special recognition, so I don't know who is gonna present these, alright, Mr. Young is gonna start us off by walking us through these.
Alright, well, this is all of our favorite part of board meetings, so we did recognize quite a few people tonight, and we're gonna start off with our Nation Ford High School band, and Mr. Ray Linkus. Mr. Linkus has been with us at Nation Ford High School since it opened in 2007, full-time director since 2009, and he's been the head band director since 2019. This is Nation Ford's state championship since 2007. That means they win it more than they don't. This is the third since Mr. Linkus is here, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Linkus, thank you.
Hello everyone, I'd like to thank the generous support of Dr. Epps and our school board, Mr. Chris Chandler, the principal at Nation Ford High School, and our Nation Ford administration and staff, the Nation Ford parents, alumni, and supporters, and the talented staff that has helped our students achieve these awards. As someone who has been at Nation Ford since it opened its doors, I have a unique perspective not a lot of people on my campus share, and the one thing that holds a lot of value and means a lot to me is the culture that we try to engender in our students, which is being generous, being thankful, being gracious, being ladies and gentlemen, and being good competitors through not the goal of trying to beat any one group or person, but rather to maximize every individual student's potential. If we go for that goal, the success usually follows without much effort, and I think that that formula has proven true for us in all those years, and of all the times we were fortunate enough to achieve a state championship in South Carolina, this is probably one of the ones that I hold the most dear. From the standpoint is that it was an earned award for these students, and through their hard work and just tireless efforts day after day, it doesn't matter what the challenges were, you identify those challenges and you try to overcome them, and it was truly inspiring to be a part of these students' lives this year, and you know, we've had our shared successes and also trials, and I think that all of our students and staff and our dear parted associate, Andrew Krieger, who I know is looking at us extremely proud, really appreciate you recognizing us and giving us this opportunity. So, I wanna thank the students and our drum majors who represent these students, they are in the highest role that you can possibly be as a student in a band organization, they are the true liaisons between the directors and the students, and I couldn't be more proud of their success this year. Thank you.
Alright, not gonna get away from band just yet, next up, we have Catawba Ridge, Mr. Patrick Butler, he is in his fourth year as head band director at Catawba Ridge High School, and under his leadership, this was their fourth upper state championship and their third state championship in school history, so let's give it up for Mr. Patrick Butler.
This fall was an extraordinary experience for me and for the students. Reflecting on extraordinary year, I'm both humbled and inspired by our program's success. We began band camp back on July 17th, and I could not have believed any of the accomplishments these guys would have made. We actually reflected at the end of the season on some of the beginning videos we made and realized how far we came this year. The success of this program extends beyond our students and the field, we have a lot of people to thank and that helped us along the way. We'd like to thank the Fort Mill School Board and Dr. Epps for your continued support of all band programs here in Fort Mill, Mr. Lafford and administrative team for their commitment and support of the students, special shout out to Mr. Curtis who went with us to Indianapolis and was our support there. I'd like to thank our amazing band parents who volunteer to build props, who help the students get to where they need to go, make sure they're fed along the way, special thanks to Mr. Shives and our outstanding band staff that dedicate hours to these fine young men and women to make them who they are, and most importantly, these representatives here we have, and the students of the band program at Catawba Ridge, putting countless hours to perfect their craft and the growth that they have throughout the season, becoming fine young men and women and great performers on the field. This year's success is a reflection of the incredible teamwork we have at Catawba Ridge, not just student-wise, but staff and parents, and dedication to our mission, which is to innovate, educate, and engage at our highest level. Thank you all.
Ooh, I like that sweatshirt. You get a gold star for that sweatshirt.
Alright, next up, we have Banks Trail Middle School, Ms. Pearson, the chorus teacher there cannot be here tonight, but Mr. Perch is gonna recognize one of their awesome choral students, Nora Frye.
Good evening, I'm here on behalf of our choral director, Mrs. Pearson, to brag on one of our 7th grade superstars, this is Nora Frye, one of our Timberwolves. Nora is a strong classroom student, she's a member of our Banks Trail Cheer Team, she is in both our honors theater and our honors chorus classes, but most importantly, she's a great kid. Nora has a tremendous, tremendous singing voice, and she is a fantastic soloist. If you've heard her perform at any of our plays or our concerts, she's a showstopper, so, so talented. Through a pretty extensive audition process, Nora has been selected to the National Honors Choir. We had to find a place big enough for her voice, so Nora will be heading to Dallas, Texas in March to sing at the convention for the American Choral Directors Association. She is the first Banks Trail student to be recognized with this award, and we could not be more proud of her. We know that she's gonna represent our school and our district very well in the great state of Texas. On behalf of Mrs. Pearson and myself, we can't thank you enough for the support that you show these programs at the middle school level and the opportunity that it provides for students like Nora. You ready for our duet? I'm not gonna put her on the spot tonight to sing, but I will invite you to our spring concert in a couple months, so that you can say that you've heard her before she goes and becomes big time world famous, but she's definitely a name to keep an eye out for, so thank you again.
Alright, and next is Fort Mill High School, we have Mr. Tim Pacer. He has been at Fort Mill High School for the past seven years, after teaching in North Carolina for 32 years, and this is the school's first state championship in agronomy, however, they did win three state championships last year in different events, so I'm gonna hand it off to him.
Thank you, thank you. We had our time for arts, now we're gonna have to have our time for agriculture. It's serving you three times a day, I hope. And our agronomy team, a lot of people do not understand agronomy, so I'm gonna have to define that a little bit, because I was talking to my daughter-in-law, and she's like, "I'm sure that was difficult, but what is it?" I've kinda put down a little definition here. These students were able to apply science and technology from biology, chemistry, economics, ecology, soil science, water science, pest management, genetics, to the improvement and management of food crops. So, they take a lot of skills that they learn in other classes, and I'm just blessed to get some really talented students, young members, and they were able to take those skills and put them against the other schools in the state of South Carolina, and we came out number one. Mr. Leo Nielsen was number one scorer overall in the state, and I have Matty Rosieri, Ethan Dowd, and Isabella Herrera. This team will go on to represent South Carolina at the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana this coming fall. And I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Bean, he's always a great supporter of our FFA, and we have a long tradition, I found a trophy back from 1940 that the Fort Mill FFA had won, and the Agriculture Department there actually goes back to 1919, but we look forward to representing South Carolina in the agronomy contest.
Good evening, it is my pleasure actually to do our next award for the district, if we could have the Forest Creek Mock Trial Team and their coaches Amanda Van Valkenburg, Michelle Ingstrom, and their attorney support Gary Lemel, please come up. The Forest Creek Team won the State Mock Trial Championship held by the South Carolina Bar Association, following a two-day competition at the magistrate court in Columbia, South Carolina. The team beat out 20 other schools that were selected to participate in the state, including a former state champion in the final round. This is the first mock trial state championship for Forest Creek, obviously is our youngest middle school, but we're sure hoping to see a lot more coming from them, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Van Valkenburg to share a little bit more about the team.
Good evening, on behalf of Ms. Ingstrom, Mr. Gary Lemel, our administration, and our fantastic students that you see here, and their phenomenal parents, I'd like to say thank you to the Fort Mill School Board and Dr. Epps for the recognition of our mock trial team. This is FCMS's third year with a mock trial team, and like Mr. Burke just said, our first time winning the state championship. For those not familiar with the competition, let me briefly explain. Students representing you before you are gonna be attorneys or witnesses each round. As the program continues to grow, we also teach them the legal process as well as trial procedures, and our victory is really owed to Mr. Lemel, who is our attorney coach, for teaching those students the law and how to execute the law. Our students also work tirelessly, they put in extra hours after school, during their lunch breaks on Saturdays, and even during holiday breaks to learn the law and present it flawlessly to the courts. And also their parents, for driving the students to those practices and listening to the students give speeches and helping their child become the best lawyer or witness possible. In total, we played six different teams and defeated each of them that we met. Seeing the students grow in confidence each round was nothing shy of our personal gift and joy. Ms. Ingstrom and I cannot thank you guys enough for your dedication and hard work this season. We are so proud to know that the lessons that you have learned from this program will continue to help you be successful in the future. We would also like to thank you guys for letting us have this opportunity for this wonderful program. We also used to teach at former middle school, where we also did the mock trial program, and you know, we're passionate about it, and we thank you guys for being so passionate about it as well, and we hope to continue to grow the program throughout our district and with the high schools moving on. So, finally, congratulations again to you guys, our state championships, the Forest Creek Middle School, mock trial team.
Donna, I've decided I'm gonna need a bigger gavel.
Nice job, y'all.
I did ask if you could borrow the gavel, but they said they were taking it back.
It looks a little heavy to handle in here.
And finally, we have one more recognition for the night, and this is actually a district one that we do annually, and we're very excited to present this, this is part of the later piece of our agenda that'll be coming up, but each year, the Finance and Communications Department partner with the Digital Art and Design Programs to create the artwork for our district annual financial report, which again, we're gonna be presenting tonight. So, at this time, if I could ask Josh Miller and Tara Miller to please come up front for me? And I'll go ahead and out this now, yes, they are related. That had no bearing on the competition though, I will say that. Students and Ms. Miller and Ms. Tiana Scott's designed Level 2 classes created designs based on this year's theme, which is the Fort Mill Four. For those of you guys that have seen that, that is the four pillars in Fort Mill, and we gave that to them as the theme for their design, but we gave them the freedom to create anything that they wanted to create from that point forward. So, once we gave them the parameters, kinda checked in every once in a while, but they took off and running, and the students created designs that are amazing, and as I said, I don't know if you heard that, that's a Level 2 class, which is not a Level 4 class, and the artwork that we got out of there, I have seen be rivaled by some college programs. And that's not grandstanding, because I was an art major myself, and I've seen college level work, and these kids are doing it, it is amazing. Josh's design really stood out, it had a excellent cohesive feel all the way through it and a very professional look, so even though it was a very tough decision for the end, and as Ms. Lorto can tell you, we went back and forth on it, ultimately, this design, we thought, really stood out for the district and really gave us a great face. I will also say that this particular document has gone on to win previous awards based on student artwork that has been done, and I have no doubt that this year's gonna be exactly the same. So, wanna bring them up front and say congratulations to them, you guys can move around that way. As part of the program, that's also a wonderful piece, is that Josh now gets a finalized printed copy of his work to use in his future endeavors or part of his resume.
And for his pleasure reading.
Bedtime reading.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I always love these parts of the agenda, not only because of the celebrations of the students, but just the realization that, you know, we talk a lot about the awards and academics, but it really is the whole child, and I'm so excited to see all the other things that they're doing outside of the classroom as well. And along those lines, we've got some more kind of like recognition, we're gonna get a school spotlight for Dobie's Bridge Elementary, so I think Ms. Amanda Coobes is gonna come up and start us off for that, there she is, back in the back, she can make it right in the front.
Hi, sorry, there's a lot of our former Dragon students back there, we're excited to see them. As Ms. Spear said, I'm Amanda Coobes, I'm a very proud principal of Dobie's Bridge Elementary, and I'm here today with my 3rd grade team, and we're gonna be presenting on professional learning teams and what that looks like at Dobie's Bridge Elementary. So first, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the why we believe in professional learning teams and why we think professional learning teams are so important, and then you'll get to hear the experience from the teachers after I'm done with the why. So part of our why is that we just really believe that professional learning teams and teachers working in collaborative groups really improves teaching and learning. Our teachers are planning together, they're creating common assessments together, they look at data together, and through that, they're able to just share strategies and what's working in one class to help another teacher that may be struggling with her students and his or her students in their class. So, ultimately, we do feel that the collaborative work does improve student learning. Also, relationships, we know that relationships are a big factor in teacher retention as well, so through our teachers collaborating together, they're able to build relationships, they're able to trust one another, because they do oftentimes share kids, so they have to look at data and understand that what's working in one class, another teacher may need their students for a little bit to help close some gaps, so they do have to build trusting relationships. And finally, it also provides time for teachers to reflect on their practices. Just today, we had data dives, and a couple of teachers were talking about a recent test that they had taken, it's called a STAR test, and one teacher was like, "Man, your kids, they really took their time on their tests, my kids did not, like, why is that?" And so they were able to, the teachers were able to talk together and reflect and realize that one teacher, when her kids got finished taking a test, they had some free time and got to do what they want, had preferred activities, whereas the other teacher was like, "Oh no, when they're done, they have to read a book," and so the kids in the class that just have to read a book kinda took their time, and so they performed better. So, it also just gives them a time to reflect together without me having to tell them everything that they need to do. If you attended our district strategic planning meeting, Dr. Whiten has talked a little bit about this, this is some research from John Hattie, this is another reason why we really believe in professional learning teams. He's an educational guru, done tons of research on educational practices that affect and impact student learning. So, anything in the chart, from yellow to green to blue, has a positive impact, and blue being the biggest impact, and collective teacher efficacy is one of the highest impacts on student learning. And basically, what collective teacher efficacy is, is teachers coming together and believing that they can impact student instruction in a positive way. So that goes hand in hand with professional learning teams. And then finally, another why for us is just our data. This is just one snapshot of data, this is a three-year trend of our data in ELA in math, just from SC Ready, and you can see in ELA and math, over the last three years, our students have continued to increase their scores in meets and exceeds, so we do really see the impact that it has on data as well. So what it looks like, these are just some pictures of some of our professional learning teams, we have a group of two, two teachers can be a professional learning team, they're just collaborating and planning. The picture in the middle is kind of one of our kickoffs to PLCs, where our teachers lead their team, and what is a PLC is something that we have found through the past couple years, was a step that we were missing, like we just sometimes felt like everybody knew what a PLC or professional learning team was, and then we realized that, no, each year, we need to restart each year with the teams leading each other through what their roles and responsibilities are on the team. And then finally, the last picture is a peer learning lab, so professional learning teams can also attend peer learning labs where they learn from another teacher as well. So, those are just some of the action shots that we have, but now I am happy to introduce another recognition that this team received last year was, our 3rd grade team did receive one of the PLC Teams of the Year, so I'm happy to turn it over to them now, so you can hear their experience.
So I'm just gonna talk to you a little bit about our team and what we've experienced, so Mandy kind of already talked about this, but that open and honest communication, I think that's just kind of helped all of us wanna come to work every day, is we know we're gonna meet with each other, that we can be honest, we can communicate, and no one's gonna judge what someone else says, we also can learn from each other, and so that just makes having your team there with that honest communication so much better. And then idea sharing, we have a team that has a couple GT teachers, which is gifted and talented, and our general education teachers too, so when we're able to share those ideas with each other, we can get enrichment ideas, you can also get ideas for your kids that are struggling, without each other's collaboration, then we don't really get those ideas from each other. And then the last one that I'm sharing on is just that building on trust, that mutual respect between each other, and making sure that we're listening to each other, we're taking in what each other say, and just really trusting what someone else says and going from there.
Hi, my name is Lani Collins, so just a little bit more about our experience with PLTs, something that we focus on is being solution-oriented. As teachers, something that we kinda have to firmly believe is that there's not a problem we can't solve, so dwelling on problems isn't something that we waste time on, we make sure that we're always focused on solving those problems together as a team, that's kind of just like the whole goal, and being student-centered and united. Obviously, again, as teachers, our main number one goal is making sure that we are doing what's best for our students every single day, and so coming together and having this time to work with each other, compare data, compare situations, compare teaching strategies, we're making sure that we are focused on those students at all times, and just genuinely doing what's best for them, and you know, that might look different in every classroom, but it just is a great time for us to come together and share that. One of the biggest things is recognizing that we are on the same team, we are not competing. You know, I think everyone has experiences where they've been in a collective group, but there seems to still just be some tension within it, and I can genuinely and honestly say that there is none within our team. I am actually new to the team this year, but I have just gotten to see so much growth, I kinda lucked out getting this team, and so, you know, they've really just kinda shown me the ropes of PLTs and just really diving into things, and just understanding that we all really do have a shared purpose of making sure that our students are prepared and ready for their next grade, we look at, you know, data beforehand and afterhand to make sure that we're just always doing what's best for them.
Hi, I'm Brianna Toly, I'm gonna talk about the roles in the agenda that we do for PLTs. All of our stuff is teacher-led, but we have an amazing administration staff that helps and supports us. We set our own goals for each weekly meeting, and we send it out prior to, and we kinda ask the team, is there anything else that anyone else wants to put on the agenda, so that we are covering everything that anyone wants to talk about. But the biggest reason is to stay focused and efficient and make sure that our time is well-spent. So at the start of the year, we assess our individual strengths and skills, and then we assign our roles, it's kind of a fun activity, where we all kind of find the tool that we are, are you a ruler, a pencil, a saw, screwdriver, I don't know. But from that, we then kinda assign roles to each one of us, and we stick with those roles, and Nikki, she is an amazing, or she's a note-taker, I could never do note-taking like she does, and then we have just standards, an ELA leader, math leader, a team leader, and then timekeeper, and then we are all our own taskkeepers, making sure that we're all on task, but it just runs so smoothly, and everybody has their strength, and we use those as we go through our meetings.
Hi, I'm Nikki Hoffman, thank you for having us. One priority that we have for our PLT meetings is data dive, so we're really prioritizing taking that time to see where our students are at in their learning and really meet them there. And one way that we do this is through having a Google Excel sheet, and we share it with our team. What we do is first, this is an example of our math Excel sheet, what we do when we start a new unit is we establish our essential standard, and after we've established an essential standard or two, then we take it to this tracker, and there's a lot of red and green on here, so I'll explain what that means. At the beginning of our unit, we take a pre-test, and this pre-test, we identify with. And this pre-test, we identify which questions on it are reflective of our essential standard. And then we list those questions at the top. So we see questions one, two, three, and so on up there on that left side. And then on the right side, we have our post-assessment that students take at the end of our assessments. We identify those questions that reflect our essential standard. And then we have it listed up there so we know what questions we're reflecting on. On the left side, we have our student, our teacher names. And then each row represents a student and their progress throughout the unit. On that left side, we track and we check those individual questions. If students are still progressing toward that essential standard, then we mark it as a red. And if they have reached mastery to that essential standard for that specific question, we mark it as a green. We do the same for our post-assessment. And then we can track our student data. What's awesome about this is at the end, we can see exactly where students are at in their learning toward that essential standard. And hopefully, they're more green, but sometimes they're red. When we look at that data, we can see the students that are in green at the end. We know that those students are ready to extend their learning through a challenge and a fun activity that shows and demonstrates their knowledge or through a project, an extension project. And students that are red, we identify those students and put them in small groups to further their instruction through intervention and more intentional time with them. After we have our data tracked like this, we really look at the growth from the left to the right and see which students or which classes had a lot of maybe red on the left side with the pre-test. And then they grow and change to green on the right side. And then we ask those teachers what they did and strategies that they taught to be able to move them from the red to the green. And we're able to share that with each other. So when we take it to our intervention small groups later on, we're able to teach our students from the strategies we learned from each other in a new way and hopefully reach them further. And then we'll further assess and see their growth throughout that time. What's great about this is we don't use it as a need to judge or comp. If we're never in a competition with each other, we don't do it at that service, at that purpose. We use it as a way to learn from each other and try what each of us have used in our own classrooms and see what could then work for our students. And this really prioritizes how we have all students in third grade are our students and that we really want to reach every single child, whether or not they are in your class or the class next door to you. And we use this as a way to also celebrate our wins when students have reached growth.
Good evening. My name is Lenazia Bryan. And like Ms. Coobes said at the beginning, one of our big things that we do with our PLT is reflection. So when it came time for us to make this and we were talking about our challenges, everything that we brought up in our meeting together, it boiled down to time, which I feel like as adults, we never have enough time to do anything, right? But our main challenge is where we have all these great ideas and everything, but when it comes to putting some of these ideas in action and doing prep for those different things, that's where we feel that time crunch is happening. We were very lucky to win PLC Team of the Year. So that half-day planning that we got was great. We loved it. And we really were able to see all of the ideas that we had. We were able to put them into practice. Also with time, we realized with new instructional materials, new standards, every so years, those change. So we have to kind of start from square one again. And, sorry, a little nervous. But like I said before, everything that we do, we want to make sure that we're doing it efficiently to help our team grow, but more importantly, to help our students get better. And not just for third grade, but as they progress and eventually leave us. But again, thank you for having us. And yeah.
Hi, my name's Carly O'Brien. And I'm going to wrap us up here. But overall, PLTs play a crucial role in promoting that student learning and success. We really do see a big difference with our student achievement with our data dives. But not only do we see a positive impact in our PLTs and our students, but we also are able to recognize that we really have been able to create a really wonderful, supportive, strong team environment. Thinking about all the things that we have to do day to day, it's really wonderful to know that you have team members that you can trust and lean on when we get overwhelmed or there's just a lot going on that we need to lean on one another and have that support from one another. We really do support our students best when we support each other. And really work towards understanding one another and learning from one another has really helped us thrive. So thank you very much for having us.
Do you guys have any questions? They also appreciate the early release days, too. They use those days a lot, too. If we could get more, that'd be great. That's my plug. No, but thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
No questions, but I think it is, it is great to see. And I love whichever comment it was about, it's not a competition. And I think the fact that you guys all work together on behalf of each and every student at the school, not just the ones in your classroom, and no pride of ownership of who came up with the best idea. You know, we bring in a lot of new teachers every year. At least, that's one positive about having to hire so many teachers is that, you know, there are always new ideas. And I love the fact that everybody's open to learning best practices from everybody. I think it's great.
I'll put one more plug in in case any of our other Dragon teachers are watching. All of our teams are fantastic. We just chose this team since they were the PLC Team of the Year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to other things. Sorry, we have to do some of these others. Like approval of minutes. So we did have our last meeting before the holidays back on December 10th. You've all received a copy of those minutes. Were there any adjustments or corrections? All right, then those will stand with unanimous consent. I do have one card for public participation. So Jamie Costea, if you want to approach the podium, if you'll give us your name and address, then you've got up to five minutes to address the board.
Hello, my name is Jamie Costea, and I live at 325 Bricksome Place. I am here this evening to discuss Sylfab. I have spoken with experts and chemists, some of which have also stood before you. They have specifically expressed their concern of the proximity of Sylfab to the Flint Hill schools. These concerns have been downplayed and ignored by the school board. These experts are far more educated in this field than anyone sitting on this board. And yet you continue to ignore and belittle the concerns of parents. Per SC law, amongst the general powers and duties of school trustees is to provide suitable schoolhouses in its district and make them comfortable, paying due regard to any schoolhouse already built or site procured. I stand before you to state that this board has failed in its duty to provide a suitable schoolhouse and has not paid due regard to the site procured for Flint Hill, as evidenced by this district's inaction over Sylfab. Per this board's own policy, under KBB Parents' Rights and Responsibilities, every parent or legal guardian has the right to receive reasonable protection for his or her child from physical harm while under school authority. Where's my right to receive reasonable protection for my children? The school board has failed to take the appropriate action. Let's be honest, any action to ensure that the children attending Flint Hill will not be exposed to harmful conditions due to the school's close proximity to Sylfab. Putting kids in the Flint Hill schools creates an unreasonable risk of harm. And the board's failure to do its due diligence in investigating these risks and standing up against the situation makes them both negligent and complicit in this situation. The legal definition of negligence is failure to use reasonable care resulting in damage or injury to another. Reasonable care is a level of caution and concern a reasonable person would use in a given situation to ensure the safety of themselves and others. Reasonable care is a minimum standard that everyone is held to in a court of law. Gross negligence is a level of carelessness that is more than ordinary negligence, but less than intentional misconduct. It is defined as an act of omission that creates an unreasonable risk of harm to others because of a person or board's failure to exercise slight care or diligence. As previously stated, you have been informed by experts of the danger of Sylfab and its location right next to the Flint Hill schools. And while I understand that the Fort Mill School District did not authorize Sylfab to operate their heavy industrial work, the school district has done nothing to independently verify the level of risks associated with this development. The Fort Mill School District and Board have a responsibility to take reasonable care to ensure the safety of the students and the teachers in their district. Should an accident at the site take place resulting in physical harm or death of students and teachers, you will be held accountable for your inactions. Failure to take the appropriate steps now that you have been notified of these dangers on more than one occasion and to continue to allow children to be zoned for this school while there's a potential for Sylfab to be there is an act of negligence. None of you are experts in this field, which has been made abundantly clear by your responses to the information that has been presented to you. A reasonable person would listen and heed the opinion of experts and act accordingly. What would act accordingly entail? Glad you asked. Acting accordingly would be for the school board to obtain a third-party reassessment to evaluate if the concerns being brought before the board are legitimate or for the board to seek legal counsel to determine what rights the school district has regarding the land, given that York has authorized heavy industrial work in a light industrial zoned property. Acting accordingly would require action and not the display of passiveness we have seen from the school board. Lastly, I'll leave you with this. All that it takes for bad things to happen is for good people to do nothing.
Thank you. Item six, we've got some staff reports, starting with the annual audit report. Ms. Lordo? Okay, all right. Or Ms. Phillips?
Hey there. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. We're not going to go through this beautiful ACFER that it's called, but we will try to just hit the highlights through the PowerPoint that you can see before you because we just find it's a little more effective. But again, as we go through it, if you have any questions, please feel free to interject or you can wait to the end, whatever you prefer. We like to remind everybody, you know, of the district's responsibilities, that these are your financial statements and also the importance of internal controls, that we want to make sure that there's checks and balances so that one person can't do it all. So one of the things that we do as your auditors is we try to look at your significant internal control processes. We try to kick those tires. And if we come across issues, it's not just important that I talk to Leann and Dr. Epps about it. It's important that you know about it because you can't fix it if you don't know it's broken. So again, that's some of the things that we're doing behind the scenes so that when we come to our opinion, you know, we're issuing an unmodified, that's a strange term, but that's a clean opinion. And we give you reasonable assurance. We don't give you an absolute assurance because we don't look at every single transaction. We take samples, we look at key items. And that's how we extrapolate our testing into our coming up with our final opinion. This year, we wanted to kind of remind you, oh, I skipped a slide here. Man, this thing is going the wrong way. Okay? Excuse me. I'll figure this thing out. All right, I got it now, I think. All right, the thing that we like to do about once every three to five years is just to remind you about fraud. You know, when they've done a lot of studies of fraud, they've always found that there's three things are present when fraud occurs. The first one there is a need. Somebody has to have a reason why they want to steal. Maybe that need is they have a lot of medical bills. Maybe they have a child going off to school, college. Maybe someone's lost a job in the family, right? So that's the need. The second, they have to rationalize, why is it okay to steal? They have to logically work through that. Sometimes that rationalization, if you read the studies, is that, you know, "They haven't ever given me a fair wage. They've never given me a good cost of living increase. Or I work harder than all of my friends around here, and this is my way of equalizing it." We've actually seen Robin Hood effects where I'm going to steal from the rich and give to the poor. You notice the need and the rationalization. You really can have no control over those two items. You don't know why somebody has a need or why they might think it's okay to steal, but you can have an impact on the opportunity. So what you want to do in your life and in your businesses and within the school district, you want to make it so difficult that somebody doesn't want to try, that they'll look somewhere else. They'll do it at some other organization, but not at your organization. So again, I just want to remind you, so a lot of what your staff is always constantly trying to look at is to make sure that there are adequate internal controls that are in place. All right, we did that one already. We were going to look at your general fund. I know the thing that probably people look at the most is that fund balance. So you had unassigned fund balance of around $47 million. That chart really kind of helps you see how you've trended over the past few years. You had an increase of about $3.8 million from the prior year. And this represents about 22% of your 2024 actual expenditures. And it's about 20% of your 2025. Now, remember, every year, as your budget goes up, you really have to raise your unassigned or that percentage ultimately will come down. So you do always have to see an increase if you want to kind of keep that percentage to be roughly the same. Most of our school districts that we are involved with, we see somewhere between like 20% and 30%. That's kind of the typical. If some districts are really, really conservative, they'll start pushing it higher because they maybe are scared of risk. What would happen if, you know, the economy tanked or the state changes the funding formula? All those things could make someone want a higher percentage. Then maybe a marketeer or a salesman, ah, we're good. We'll keep it really low. We don't need that much. So everybody kind of has a different temperament. But generally, we see somewhere between 20% and 30%. All right, so why do you want to have an adequate fund balance? Remember, some of your revenues, especially those real property taxes, remember, those went out in October. Most people begin to pay them in December, January, February, and they kind of dry up. And those don't get levied again until the next year. It helps you with emergencies, unanticipated expenditures. It gives you flexibility. So like, if there's a need that comes up, if you don't have any money in the bank, you don't really have a lot of options, right? You're going to have to borrow, do something else. So it gives you flexibility. When you do have to borrow, if they see you have a good track record of maintaining a strong fund balance, they're going to give you better interest rates than the other entity down the road. It helps you with shortfall. So if there is something takes place economically or on the state level, you have ability to bide your time a little bit longer maybe than someone else. It's just important in uncertain economic times. All right, well, let's look at your general fund revenues. They were about $209 million. They increased about $24 million or 13%. Your state revenues was a big piece of that, about $5.4 million. But remember, there's that new funding formula. So state aid, it's a classroom, was a big piece of that. Some of that's retiree insurance. Some of that is property tax relief, you know, from the state. You also, your local revenues increased $18.5 million. Most of that, of course, is in the higher taxes. And remember, you see a lot of assessed value growth every year, but you also are having to raise some of the mills to try to keep pace with the growth that you're seeing here. What we've also seen over the last year or two, which, you know, won't last forever, is the higher interest rates. And we're seeing a lot of people earning around 5% on their money when, you know, a couple of years ago, that was less than 1%. And so that's really generating some extra revenues. As it relates to your budget, you came in about $9.3 million or 5% over budget. We kind of listed there, but a part of that is your staff wants to be conservative. You don't want to automatically take what you got last year and say, "We're going to grow at 10%." That's a lot of risk there. And so they're trying to be conservative as a budget as well. All right, well, let's look at your expenditures. They were about $217 million, about an increase of about 13% from the prior year. We kind of list, you know, the areas, but you know as well as I do, if your costs are probably up, it's salary and benefits. And I mean, that's your people business. And so remember, you know, you gave a number of cost of living increases. Remember some of the teacher increases that you gave, some new positions. That's what's driving that. And unfortunately, benefit costs generally don't ever go down. They generally keep going up. You were slightly over budget, but those were on some of operational fuel, utility type of cost things. And if you remember, you looked at that Snyder Electric Advanced Energy And if you remember, you looked at that Snyder Electric Advanced Energy Management Program project, and that's hopefully will be able to start addressing some of those higher utility operational costs and maybe help shave some monies off of that in future years. Also, your transfer in, we're about $4.6 million under budget, that's the net there. Remember, you transferred out about $1.2 million to the special revenue fund for operating needs, the debt service, and you can see those other items there as well. All right, well, let's just look at briefly some of your other funds. Remember the special projects fund, that's a lot of your federal monies, and so, you know, you see that Title I, IDA, ESER, that's where a lot of that, you expended about $18.9 million in funds there. On your Education Improvement Act, remember, this is a whole bunch of special education programs with the state. You expended about $3 million, but with the new funding formula, if you remember, a whole bunch of that aid money comes in to that fund and then you transfer it to the general fund. So that's kind of a new development. So that state aid to classroom, and that was about $15 million. It comes into the EIA fund, it gets transferred immediately over the general fund. So that's kind of a new development once this new funding formula kicked in. As it relates to your food service fund, remember, this is, you have some, you know, cost for the meals that you charge, but you also have a lot of federal state grants coming into there. You had revenues of about $8.2 million, some other financing sources, and then you had expenditures of about $9.7 million. So you had a decrease, and y'all been trying to lower that fund balance. Use it for various kitchen enhancements, cafeteria enhancements as those needs come up, and the goal is to try to bring that down to a good level there. All right, well, let's briefly look at your debt service fund. You have about $11.7 million in fund balance. Remember, that's restricted for debt service, so it's not like you can use it for anything else. You did have a millage increase in that fund of about two mills. As it relates to your capital projects fund, you have about $64.1 million in fund balance. Remember, you have your long-range facility plan, you have all your future projects that are coming. And so, you know, one thing that you have done a number of years ago is you began to set aside monies in that fund for future school openings, and there's a balance there of about $4.6 million still remaining at June 30th of '24. And so what you try to do sometimes is if you're having a really good year in your general fund, you try to set aside some of that money in your capital projects fund for future capital needs or other projects as they come up. Some years you can't, but some years you can. You had capital and related cost of about $46 million, and just remember, you're always building. I don't have any school districts that build as much as you, and so you always have so much capital needs. And so again, you just have a lot of, you know, effort that your staff is having to put in on managing all those projects as well. All right, well, let's briefly look at the net pension liability and deferred items. Remember, you participate in the pension plans on the state level. The GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they took the position back, became effective in 2015, that they wanted governments to reflect their proportionate share of what the state liability is on your books, whatever your proportionate piece would be. And the way they do that is they take your pension contributions and divide it by all pension contributions, and that's a real small percentage. Well, when you do it up against like $20-some billion, you end up with a pretty big liability. And so your estimated liability is about $224.4 million. It didn't change a lot from the last year. So remember, the real takeaway on that liability is that they're not going to ask you to write them a check for that amount, but they're getting you with the last bullet point. They've been raising that rate 1% a year. Now, the good thing is the last scheduled rate increase went into effect for fiscal year '24, and they'd been doing 1% increases for five years. They delayed it one year during COVID, so it took six years for them to get it. So we're now at the maximum rate right now that's scheduled, which is $18.56 and $21.24. But remember too, that your employees also contribute 9% to 9.75% too. So you think about that, that could be like 25 to 30 cents on every dollar is going to the state to shore up that pension plan. And that pension plan is about 55, 60% funded now. And the goal is hopefully they can get it funded better, then maybe they can lower those rates in the future. All right, well, let's brief, oh, yes.
Can I ask you on that one?
Yes.
Do, I know that was supposed to be the top. Do we believe it's going to hold?
There's no way to know right now. It's early, early in the game.
We've not heard.
But I will say this, you know, it all depends a lot on investment returns too, and, you know, the last year or so have been good, and that's why you don't see the liability shooting up. If they can earn their expected rate of return, it should work. If they don't, then they'll have to look at other options.
Maybe they should consider pulling the money out and putting it somewhere else to save it.
That's, yeah, such a, almost like a political, nobody will want to deal with that topic on the state level, really.
Or any other.
You know, also, you participate in the state OPEV or retiree health insurance plan. You have, your proportionate share of that liability is about $156 million. You're like, wow, it went down. Well, that's kind of a paper game because they get to change the discount rate, and they were able to raise it because the interest rates are so high right now, that lowers the liability. So as soon as the rates kind of go back to lower levels, that liability will shoot back up. This plan is a little bit more troubling. It's only funded around 11%, so it only has 11 cents for every dollar it really needs. So what I would tell you is that last bullet point there, I would really expect that rate, they're going to start ratcheting it up in future years. Now that they've kind of got the pension ratcheted up, they're going to start ratcheting this one up to hopefully shore up that plan. All right, just wanted to mention to you, we implemented a new group capital asset purchase. So the old rules were always if you had an individual capitalization threshold, which about every government sets it at $5,000, you were good as gold as long as you followed it. Well, a question came into the GASB and said, what if you buy 1,000 iPads? And that 1,000 iPads is a million dollars. Should I capitalize it or not? Because individually, they're not significant, but in total, they are significant. Well, the GASB came back and said, yeah, we want you to start capitalizing them. So in fiscal year '24, they said, okay, you got to do it, but you know, we're not going to just say do it prospectively, we want you to go back and look at all your prior years retroactively. So your staff had to go back and look at Chromebooks and look at boards and all types of purchases over the last few years to kind of quantify those, and then we had to capitalize and add them, and that was approximately $8.2 million. So that's what that was. Your total capital assets are about $576 million, an increase of $13 million. Remember, you have a lot of additions, but you also, we begin to depreciate those assets over their estimated useful lives. So if it was a 30-year building and it was $30 million, we're going to do $1 million a year, we're going to depreciate it. And we do that across all of your assets. So that's why the net increase is lower than it would appear. All right, well, let's briefly look at your long-term obligations. You have about $492 million. This was a decrease of about $35 million. You made principal payments of about $63 million. Remember, you did issue the 2023 CGOB for $30 million, but you really just paid off other debt that it was replacing. Your mortgage payment for the year you're in right now, fiscal year '25, is about $46 million, just like on your, think about the mortgage on your house. You have an annual mortgage payment, that's what your mortgage payment is, $46 million. All right, there are some new accounting pronouncements coming, but we're going to be working, one of them hits next year on compensated absences, so we'll be working with your staff on that. They're wanting to do a better estimation process of what you think you will ultimately pay out related to vacation accruals and all that type of stuff. And then the last GASB there, 103, they're going to want more robust explanations in the financial statements going forward. And so that'll be another pronouncement that kicks in in fiscal year '26. Remember, one of the things we do is we try to kick the tires, if you remember, I sit on your controls. So if we had issues, we would have findings here. We would say, well, hey, we didn't notice your bank recs weren't being done. Or, hey, you know, we saw a lot of checks and nobody was reviewing them. That's where we would list a finding. We did not have any of those. One of the things that we have to do, because you have a lot of federal money, we have to do a single audit. So we looked at two of your federal programs, IDA, and we looked at the ESER, and we did not have any issues with the program. There's a separate letter they probably sent out to you, we call it the management letter, and the only comment we have in there is we like to remind you, there's always risk with pupil activity funds. And you can only do so much, and your staff, you know, they do training, they go out and kick tires, but there's only, you got to kind of weigh cost-benefit. You know, you could totally fix it maybe, but you'd have to hire another bookkeeper at every school, and that would be, let's say, half a million or a million dollars, and you would probably save the potential of losing $10,000 or a few years. So you've got to weigh, I really feel like what you're doing is very good and reasonable, but you always got to realize, once every three to five years, probably something's going to hit the paper. It's not going to be favorable, but you've got to sit back and say, yeah, but the other things I could have done would have cost me more, and it's just not worth, we've got reasonable controls. And, you know, the more we move away from cash and we move more to paying online and all that, that's going to help eliminate some of the money trickling from the students to the teacher, to the bookkeeper and all that that takes place. Again, unmodified, I know it's a strange term, but that's a good term, that's clean. You really have a good financial condition, and, you know, the staff here are just great. I'm just telling you, I do a lot of school, we do over 20-some school districts, and this is a great staff. So again, they're just really good to work with. Any questions? Because I know I'll go quick.
I have one question.
Yes.
You made note of, and I went back to that slide, the food service fund balance, that is separate from our regular fund balance.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I want that clarification more for the public than.
Right.
I was.
It's not like something you can go rob and take into the general fund. Right.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you stressed earlier about that you could give a reasonable assurance? And I heard the stress, the stress in that. And you, you do a wonderful job in your presentation, so I enjoy listening to you. A question I have for you is regarding fraud. You spent some time speaking about that. Do you believe that we're, we are positioned to handle fraud better than what we have the last three, four years?
I mean, I feel like y'all do a really good job of trying to assess that and identify those risks. And, you know, your staff, you know, really tries to even do the booster clubs and, you know, PTAs and does training for them so that, I know those are not your organizations, but when something bad happens, still makes you look bad. They, they really try to do it in all those areas. But even with all that, there's still risk.
Sure. Ms. Lordo, or?
What?
If you're able to share with the public some mitigating tools that we've used over the last couple of years, I would appreciate it.
You have to hold the button, probably. Just easier to walk over there.
Good evening. One quick thing that comes to mind is when we implement, it's been a good many years ago now, our online pay-fee system for our families, for our parents. We did that with the purpose of significantly reducing the amount of cash that was coming into our schools, where our front office staff had to handle, our teachers had to handle cash every day in the classroom, our bookkeepers. So I think that's one of the first things that comes to mind as a great example of what we tried to do here to mitigate and reduce our, our risk of fraud just by eliminating how much cash was coming through our schools on a daily basis.
Thank you.
I'll think about some more.
I, I do have a question regarding our booster clubs.
Okay.
And not to put you on the spot, but I'll just ask the question, if you can't answer it now, fine, but how, how do you believe our booster clubs are positioned when it comes to that?
I think that it varies across our district depending on, one, the size of the booster club and the amount of parent, parent participation. You know, more often than not, those officers of those clubs, specifically our president, vice president, treasurer, secretary positions are changing over frequently, at least every couple of years when their child moves on from elementary to middle to high school. So it's a little different in that we don't have the opportunity for them to serve in those roles for multiple years, and I think that is challenging, but that for us is not unlike any other district in the state, same thing that they're facing. But that's why we have tried to be as active as we can with those groups and provide the annual training and have the audit firm come in and help with that. This year, we also brought in the director from the South Carolina Public Charities Division, and Kim Wilkersham, and she did a great job just going over some of the state filing requirements for those groups, and I got some wonderful feedback from that, and we'll continue to bring her in. But I think it's just us helping those groups, us providing information to them about requirements, but yet keeping the separation because, as David mentioned, we are legally separate entities, so we have to kind of draw that line with our control of those groups. But we want to be here to provide information and answer their questions certainly and support them when they need it.
No idea. Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry. Other questions for Mr. Green? Mr. Phillips, Mr. Green, whatever. As soon as I said that, it didn't sound right. Yes, Lippy?
I, I got busy in the appendix because it was fun for me. So Mr. Green, or Mr. Phillips, you jinxed me. Mr. Phillips, thank you for the comprehensive report, and I know you were giving a broad view, but I did have fun in the appendix. So I just want to clarify a couple of things. I feel like I'm getting better at understanding it than I was in 2022, but Table 14 listed the largest employers.
What page are you on?
Page 168. Listed the largest employers in the county, and I was surprised at Rock Hill School District, which I believe serves fewer students than we do, had a higher number of employees than we did. Am I understanding that information correctly? Okay, that was just interesting of note to me.
And if I can add, if you look at that same page, there's two columns, there's now, and then there's 10 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Look how much that's changed.
I was going to say, our number of students has grown dramatically, as has our employees, and that is, it's, it's a lesser degree of increase in Rock Hill from then to now. So it was already a very large number of employees.
Which I think speaks to the support that we are trying to provide our teachers by adding positions in, but also the hats off that we deserve to give all of our teachers for the good work that they are doing because they have neighbors who are receiving.
Additional.
Additional support. And then, oh, I tabbed it even, and I lost it. The class size, I lost it. It was in the back, but it looked like we were doing a lot better.
You're talking about the teacher, pupil teacher ratio?
Yes.
Table 16 on page 170?
That's where my tab is. Look, on page 170. All right, yes. I was excited to see that pupil teacher ratio over the last nine years has gone from 15.2 down to 12.6. So I think we are doing as good a job as we possibly can and making sure that there is a lot of attention being paid to our students. And I just wanted to clarify, when we say teachers in that ratio, we are not talking about administrators.
And, and I think that's because of the intentional effort to, to keep those numbers down and therefore to focus as many of our dollars as possible on classroom teachers who are immediate touches to all of our students.
Yes. Well, I mean, 12.6 is a lot lower than the last time I was in the classroom, and I would have loved those numbers. And I would have loved those numbers. And I'm, I know, I heard our teachers say that they need more time to do the excellent job that they're doing. And I wish I could create that for them, but I think as a team, we're doing a good job of trying to meet as many needs as we can.
Not to be confused though, that doesn't mean there's 12.6 kids in most classes. Because it does include more than individual classroom teachers.
Supportive teachers.
Right.
And yes, other people that are paid on the teacher scale that are helping.
Adult student, but not administrator.
Right. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly, that it's teachers, not administrators.
The other thing that I made note of, but of course I left my book at home because, you know, I was doing work things. Still the amount of money that we don't receive in tax revenue.
Yeah, I was gonna say, which page is that one?
That's why I didn't have to worry about it.
I, I remember that usually we like to note that publicly. But that is on page 86, under the notes to the financial statements, the York County tax abatements. And this represents the businesses who have a fee and lieu agreement currently. And this is the difference in tax revenue that we would have received if they did not have a fee and lieu agreement and they were paying at the full assessment and the full milledge. So currently, and we do choose to list out these companies individually. We're not required by the auditing reporting standards. We could summarize this, but I think it's important for us to be completely transparent with this for our community. And so we choose to list out these companies separately. But you can see that they total for the 2324 fiscal year, $12,914,000 rounded. But that's how much was abated in tax revenue that we did not receive due to current fee and lieu agreements.
And, and I think it's important to note that we are not a part of the decision.
Correct.
To grant or not grant a fee and lieu. And, and it might come as a surprise when you look down this list. I mean, there, there are companies on here that I, I've never heard of.
And these vary in the number of years.
Right.
That they are allocated for tax abatement. It could be a short amount of years. It could be a very long extended number of years.
I know there were some questions that, that someone raised, I don't know, within the last few weeks and about small businesses. And I think, I think this is an important consideration when, you know, we all regret that our tax structure puts a lot of burden on small businesses. These are not small businesses that are giving these opportunities. And it's, I think that's yet another unfortunate thing for small businesses in, in our community. Just an observation. Other questions? All right.
Okay.
You want to roll into your topic?
I will. And, and let me just add too, just as a reminder and, and for the benefit of those watching, I certainly am very proud standing here on what I call Audit Report Night. And you get to hear the formal report because this is something that not only we work on throughout the year, but really throughout the fall until we meet the requirement to file with the State Department. But this actual booklet and what we do with the graphics and all the additional schedules in the back that Ms. Pratt enjoyed, this is something that we elect to do, to do an annual comprehensive report. We do not have to do a report to this degree, but we choose to do this. We could just put a basic cover on this. We don't have to do all the graphics, but we take a lot of pride in this and we want to, this is the one financial document that we put out publicly. And we think it truly represents how important this is to us and our accountability to the community. And that's why we choose to do it. We also submit this to two separate award programs. One is the Government Finance Officers Association Financial Reporting Program. And the other is the Association of School Business Officials. These are both national programs. We have submitted for the past 17 years and won the award that this qualifies for Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. So we feel like this report certainly meets all those requirements and we have submitted again for this fiscal year for this report. So I just did want to mention that and remind you all and remind the community watching that we do that.
It, it's a lot of money that we spend on behalf of our community. And so I think it is important for, for having this level of information available to anybody that wants to review it.
Absolutely. So. So looking at the monthly report that I'm going to update you on, that was for, in your packet for November 30th, the fifth month of the fiscal year. What is key about November is David spent a lot of time talking about fund balance and why that's important and how fund balance is used. November is the month where we are going into the fund balance by the largest amount. That is the month where we have incurred year-to-date expenditures from July 1st. And it is the last month before hopefully we will get a large amount of tax revenue coming in in December. So this is the month that I expect to see the largest usage of fund balance. So for November 30th, year-to-date, our total revenue was $67,41,492. Total expenditures, $87,011,971. So we were using fund balance slightly under $20 million. So about half of our fund balance we were using for cash flow through that time period to meet our monthly financial needs. Once again, vehicle taxes did not disappoint. We collected $1,692,000 in vehicle taxes for the month of November and real estate taxes because once again, I was so happy that the county sent out the bills on time this year. We collected $3,948,000 in real estate taxes for November. Another piece of, we call it state tax revenue, but it is in lieu of some local tax revenue. We call it the Tier One Homestead reimbursement. We received 90% of that amount. It comes in either late November, early December this year. It came in late November. So that was $1,873,000. You may have seen that in the detail that came in. I did not have any other significant concerns about November unless you have any questions about anything else you saw. I'll move on to impact fees because we have a lot to talk about there. Impact fees total collected to date, we are now up above $72 million. So $72,496,792. We had two rather large days actually in December for impact fees. We had 58 homes in December and we had 12 multifamily or townhomes paid in December. So total now we've collected on single-family, 2,834 units and multifamily or townhomes apartments, 1,673 units. Interest earned, we, David mentioned about interest earnings. This has certainly benefited our impact fee account as well. We have now earned $6,811,000 in interest that we add to the $72 million. And that interest has to be used on the same impact fee projects. So we are now close to $80 million available impact fee funds. Interestingly, we have now, in addition to Flint Hill Elementary, we've, we've started submitting some invoices for Flint Hill Middle School. We have now claimed with the county $55 million. $55,312,000 out of our impact fee balance. So we are drawing it quickly now as we are into heavier construction with, with the middle school in addition to the elementary school. So now we're getting to the point where we're watching it real close. Because we know how much is left. We know the commitment on Flint Hill Elementary, but yet we're using any available towards the construction pay apps that are coming in for Flint Hill Middle School as well. But comparable data for 12 months, as we would expect, we are still about 63% more in single-family. And we are about 31% less on apartments, townhomes. But interestingly, December, our total collections were $1,197,000. So right at 1.2 million where our average monthly for 2024 was only 839,000. So December did exceed our monthly average for 2024. So we'll see if that's a sign of, of where we're going now in the new year for impact fees. I did want to mention that the, the new impact fee study is, is now been made public. It's been completed by Tischler-Weiss. They presented it to the York County Planning Commission at their monthly meeting on December 9th. We were in attendance. Ben Griffin with Tischler-Weiss came from Maryland and presented the report, as well as Jim Britton with Leitner Management Group came and discussed some of the construction cost estimates. They both did a great job, answered a lot of questions. The Planning Commission decided to defer the vote to their January meeting. And we believe that was primarily related to some of the wording in the ordinance that they will actually vote to pass the ordinance along to the full York County Council. And they wanted York County legal staff to have a little more time to look at some of that wording. So they deferred the vote. Their meeting will be held next Monday evening, January 13th. We will be there. But we are optimistic that we will get a favorable vote to then move this to the full York County Council. And then the York County Council will have three readings over the next couple of months. So the new study, it is, it is updated construction numbers. It is updated enrollment projections. But it did show that the new maximum single-family fee would be at the level of $29,640. And the new multifamily fee maximum would be $20,796. So that was what was presented to the York County Planning Commission. So I just wanted to share that with you and with the community.
And we had a bunch of questions, you know, from the planning commission. I'm sure the county council will have some, some, some of the similar questions. But I, I think it's important to note that those numbers, I mean, one, they're up significantly from 18, but they had, there were a couple of pages in the study that specifically showed the, the fact that land cost has nearly doubled and per square foot costs have nearly doubled from what, from what they were. You know, if you think about, we really did the study in about 16, 17 was when they.
We did.
Their data, right? Even though it was approved in 18, that was when the data was pulled. And so things have, things cost more significantly. And so, you know, we, we will see what, what, what happens with the county council and other things. But, you know, it, it almost, I wanted to make sure that it didn't feel like we were, we were trying to be, be greedy by pointing out what the numbers are because again, it's important to note that that's what the costs are. And depending on what happens with the impact fee, any dollar different than that is borne by the community. Right? That is the cost, even though it's shocking. And, you know, we can have the affordable housing cost discussion and, you know, all those things. But that, that is what the cost is on average based on the number of students per home and so on and so forth.
And just, just something to mention. This year or the, and the month of December, we had 1.9 or almost 1.2 or 2 million almost. Even last, last month, I just brought it up. It's, it's 1.75. So that's definitely, I mean, two months in a row that we've been significantly over our averages.
Correct. And, and as I mentioned, sometimes that just happens, it's a few days of the month.
Yeah.
Well, I think they batch them up.
They batch them up where I will see a whole street or two streets will go and be permitted at the same time.
That's exactly what it is. When you look at what was issued for Teeka Kay, that is the new River Falls. And that is, I never say it right. It's the old Windell property, Wendy Dell.
Windell Woods.
That one. And then the other that's all in the town of Fort Mill, that is all Elizabeth. And, and they're just, they're going gangbusters there. It's, it's insane. I did know, and I, I did some investigating and, and I guess I'm just curious to know from the county, the address that's 2354 Vineyard Road, they did that as a multifamily rate as opposed to a single-family rate? But there was already a single-family home on that property that sold earlier this year and it's on 12 acres. So what are they building there that they're calling multifamily?
We can certainly ask that question.
Probably if you shoot the 12 acre.
It's a $6,000 difference. I think for $6,000.
Yeah. If you'll send me the detail with the address, I can forward it to my contact in the, in the planning department office. And certainly ask that question. Also, I'll share that I asked Ms. Branding to pull for me the current. I know last time we went through the impact fee study, there was a lot of discussion about what the average price of a home in Fort Mill Teeka was at the time, especially as they discussed at the county level affordability and the affordability analysis. And so based on the current information that she pulled, I believe it was around $650,000. It was over 600,000 is now the average price of a home in Fort Mill Teeka.
And, and by comparison to any of our neighbors around us within the county, we are obviously leading the way, but substantially leading the way.
Yes, I believe.
Although theirs are not small numbers either.
No, I believe Clover was next and they were over 400,000.
Yeah. The only other thing I would add is, you know, you talked about the November and December both being really large numbers. I, I'm doing this off the top of my head, so I don't get the numbers exactly right. But when I went back and looked at what the projected home build list was in 18 or whatever, and how many we've built and how many are still left on that. I mean, there's another 6,000 or so homes that were already planned for even back then that are still on the books. So it doesn't surprise me that, you know, I think the economy may be now such that it's, and, and supply chains availability and all that kind of stuff that's causing a, a new, a new wave coming through.
Well, and, and we're still in, from an inventory and a, and a real estate standpoint, we are still in an inventory crisis. There is not enough housing.
Very much.
Available for the buyers.
Supply and demand.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lordo. And that means it is your turn to do your superintendent's report.
I'm sitting on the edge of your seat waiting for this.
That's right.
Uh, let's, let's get right into this exciting news. We already into the month of January. Looking at calendar of events, we are, tonight's the meeting. We don't have the ninth and 10th on there, but they may turn out to be eventful days if the weather misbehaves. So we've already started talking to our contacts, Joe and the other three POs in Chester and Lancaster County, about what Friday may look like if indeed the weather comes in. So we'll be, might be, be looking for some statement on that as we get closer to Friday. School board visits on Monday, Teeka Kay, Gold Hill, the two Gold Hills, the 13th. Then the 20th is MLK Day, no school for students and staff. Then on the 22nd, instead of the, in place of the second meeting of the month, we'll have a school board retreat, which is annually what we do in, in January to set our goals and district goals. And we will not have a, a, we'll have an executive session meeting that.
Not a regular meeting like this.
Not a regular meeting like this. Then on the 31st, a two-hour early release day. Any other dates on there that I missed that may be important to the board?
30th, Thursday is the COG.
Yeah, that's the elected officials event.
And then aside from that, and, and I don't recall if I shared this with y'all, so if I did, tell me that I already shared it. I was asked to join from my outgoing presidency with the SC SBA group, but also with what I've done advocacy. but also with what I've done advocacy-wise and whatnot. I've been asked to join a task force that is under University of South Carolina that is doing policy and policy review and some other things. And so I have a kickoff session with them. So I'll report back any juiciness that I learn out of that at the end of the month.
I saw that. It came across my desk. Congratulations.
And then as Ms. Lorto mentioned, we do have, or the Planning Commission does have their meeting Monday night as well, where this will be on the agenda. And I don't think there's any meetings in January for the county council yet, but it's early February. Is the tentative agenda for when things would move to the county council?
Things go well, Leanne, I believe we're looking at mid-April if we can, on the impact fee final.
Right.
Before the sunset day in June.
And then I was just looking out there. I heard there's something like a dodgeball tournament happening towards the end of the month as well. He's not out there. Yeah, so we'll make sure that we talk about that and get some excitement going for that dodgeball tournament too.
Right.
I think I'm available. I play. Let's do it.
Okay, rolling along with all the excitement enrollment update. We did gain some from December to January, but the problem's a little deceiving. The numbers are a little deceiving there. Don and I were looking at it going back. That does not include, we have 49 students in the queue, right? And then we've got some early graduates. I'm not sure.
Right.
75.
Yeah, it's usually 70 to 80 December graduates that will come out of the number and then new ones plus 45, 40, 50 more new ones coming in.
Well, I would say we look at it again in February like we always do and we'll probably get a better feel for how many new kids if we have to subtract out the others. But there's the numbers there. Any questions about those numbers? Attendance update. We finally figured out how to do the teacher attendance. Aren't we smart? Took us all the way till November, December. But leading the way with teacher attendance, did y'all get in your report at Fort Mill High?
Yes.
For the high schools led the way in December with 95.95. The middle schools are led by Banks Trail Middle with 95.34. And the elementary school teacher attendance was led by Sugar Creek. They're glad to be there, 95.57. So congratulations to those schools on their teacher attendance.
Well, congratulations everybody because they're all in the 90s and that's just amazing, especially in December, right? And flu season and everything else, so.
Flu season, holidays, shopping craziness, everything.
And that's all I have.
Anything else for the, good of the group? We do not have an executive session tonight. And as you just mentioned, we will not be back here for the second meeting. So for those on the live stream and in the audience, we'll see y'all in February. Thank you all for attending. We are.